Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Dr. Ollie Wagner, the pastor at Alpharetta Presbyterian Church, to lead us in invocation.
Good evening. It's good to be with you again. Thank you for inviting me to join you. As I've done before, before I pray, I'd like to share a little bit of scripture from Philippians. "Be of the same mind, have the same love, be in full accord and of one mind; do nothing from selfish ambition or conceit; in humility regard others as better than yourselves; look not to your own interests but to the interests of others." Let us pray. Indeed, oh God, bless this council with one mind, not the mind of always agreeing with one another, but the mind of courage, the mind of compassion, the mind of humility, the mind of service. May this body exercise its authority in a way that is good and just and orderly. May their deliberations and their actions improve the lives of the residents of this city. We do thank you, oh God, for our nation, our state, our city, our neighborhoods and homes. Give us your protection, we pray. Amend our flaws, strengthen our desire to achieve what is good, give us wisdom to discern the good. We pray for the residents of this city, for its dedicated and talented staff, for its elected officials, for those who visit, labor, worship, teach, learn, shop in this beautiful and vibrant place. Serving one another and grateful for your unfailing guidance and care, we lift up to you these and all of our prayers, trusting that one day your kingdom of life and peace shall come to earth as it is now in heaven. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayers. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Wagner. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 15, 2012, to order. I want to welcome everybody here. Glad to see you. And I'd ask that our city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 15, 2012, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will please identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, again, I want to welcome everybody here. Glad to see we've got some scouts and other students here, as well as our public safety. We will move to our first item, which is our meeting agenda. City clerk, want to call that item out?
Our first item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 12-261.
Okay. Do I have any changes from council or staff recommended?
Mr. Mayor, the staff's going to recommend that you defer Agenda Item Number 12-272, which was alcohol beverage license for Mr. Jing Incorporated to the November 5, 2012.
Okay. Any other items? Anybody have any discussion on? All right, hearing none. I have a motion and a second with the recommendation from staff to defer Agenda Item Number 12-272 for the Roussans' application alcohol license to November 5, 2012.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda. It was modified by staff to defer Agenda Item Number 12-272.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by council member last second by council. Member Koontz, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we need public comment? Okay, skip on over then and move on to our consent agenda. If the city clerk will please sound those items.
First item is approval of the September 17, 2012, regular council meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number 12-262. Approval of the October 1, 2012, regular council meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number 12-263. Third, approval of the acquisition of 2,0992.54 square feet of right-of-way and 3,0901.46 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 12650 Arnold Mill Road from Varnell T. Rucker for a total combined purchase price of $38,500. Agenda Item Number 12-264. Next item, approval of the acquisition of 5,568.43 square feet of right-of-way, 475 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement, and now 9,888.44 square feet of temporary construction easement at 12690 Arnold Mill Road from Varnell T. Rucker at Al for a total combined purchase price of $38,300. Agenda Item Number 12-265. Next, approval of the acquisition of 9,774.90 square feet of right-of-way and 6,427.77 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 12625 Arnold Mill Road from the city of Milton for a purchase price of $34,300. Agenda Item Number 12-266. Our sixth item, approval of a resolution ratifying closing documents for and the city's acquisition of real estate relative to all that tract of land being known as Fulton County Tax Parcels, number 22504005350173 and 22488005340204 and 22504005350348, collectively containing a total of 7.06 acres, more or less, from Michael and Cheryl Bell Wilson for the purchase price of $517,500. This is Agenda Item Number 12-267. Approval of a resolution ratifying closing documents for and the city's acquisition of real estate relative to Fulton County Tax Parcel Number 22504053502988, containing a total of 3.04 acres, more or less, from Larry and Susan T. Hopkins for the purchase price of $425,000. Agenda Item Number 12-268. Next, approval of a lease contract between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Larry Hopkins and Susan T. Hopkins for a residence located at 15260 Bell Park Drive, Milton, Georgia, 30009, for a term of six months. This is Agenda Item Number 12-269. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a lease contract between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Doug Smith for a residence located at 15315 Thompson Road, Milton, Georgia, 30004, for a term of three months. This is Agenda Item Number 12-270.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
One second. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye on our consent agenda.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, will the city clerk please sound the first item on reports and presentations?
Presentation of certificates of recognition to Captain John Cunningham, Fire Apparatus Operator Fred Barnes, and firefighter/paramedic Walker Mann for outstanding performance. Chief Bob Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. It's, this is the best part of my job, is to get up here and praise our firefighters and our folks that are out there doing a good job every day. I'd ask that Captain Cunningham, FAO Fred Barnes, and firefighter/paramedic Walker Mann, come on up. I'd like to paint a picture for you of what took place on Monday, September 17, at 9:27 PM in the evening. Engine 43 responded to a report of a man having trouble breathing. As with any call, personnel began to formulate a plan in their minds as they're going to the call and based on the dispatch information that they have. Upon arrival, Engine 43 crew entered a home and made their way to the basement where they found their patient with no pulse, barely breathing. This was clearly more than the crew thought they were going to encounter. Personnel quickly assessed their patient, initiated CPR, and attached a LifePak-15 monitor to the patient. The monitor confirmed the patient's heart was in ventricular tachycardia and now perfusing. The patient was shocked once with no change. CPR and rescue breathing continued. The patient was reassessed and shocked a second time, which resulted in a pulse. This time, the patient still required assistance with his breathing. As the crew continued their efforts and supported the patient's breathing, his color began to come back. Aurora Metro ambulance arrived on scene. The patient was loaded into the stretcher and transported to North Fulton Hospital with Milton firefighters, continuing patient care. It was through the skill and efforts of Captain John Cunningham, FAO Fred Barnes, firefighter/paramedic Walker Mann, and that Mr. Mills is here with us this evening. And it is for that reason we are here tonight to recognize Engine 43 crew for their outstanding performance and service to the community. And if I may, I'd like to ask Mr. and Mrs. Mills and their son to come on up. The crew also has a presentation to them. We understand that he has quite a basement and with memorabilia down there, so we'd like to add to that. It's a fire rescue hat, and it has the signatures of all our personnel that treated him that day. So we'd like to allow time. Mrs. Mills, did you come?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and fellow community members and firefighters. It's just a great honor to be here tonight with these incredible men. I never really realized how valuable of a service that they perform. You hear all the time about firefighters and paramedics and, until it happens to you, you just really don't feel it in your heart. And we have since gone up to a couple of the fire stations closest to our home, the one in Birmingham where they did come from, and the one on Thompson because we weren't sure. And we spent time with them and learned about all their procedures, learned about the hundreds of hours of training they do every year, learned about how they have to, you know, be on for 24 hours straight and deal with whatever happens during that time, learned about how quickly they get out of their fire station when something like this happens. In our case, they were gone in one minute from the time that they got the call, and they were to our home in less than five minutes. And since my husband wasn't breathing the entire time, that six minutes was incredibly critical. And I just can't thank them enough, interacting with them a little bit. At the fire station, you just feel in your heart that they are the most noble men that we have in our country. They are people who devote themselves to the service of others. And we just felt their great strength and courage and love and devotion in just the few minutes that we got to know them. And I'm just so grateful that we're the city of Milton as well. I'm sure that, you know, the response time may have been quite different if we were still unincorporated Alpharetta and depending on Alpharetta or Fulton County or some other service. And so to have these men in our city is a great privilege and a great, great honor. And we are so fortunate in the city of Milton to have these kind of men. And I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very humbling experience. I had the easy part. I didn't even know what was going on, so I don't remember any of it. I remember waking up at the hospital and that was it. But I can't thank the city enough for providing these professionals with the tools and the equipment they need to do their job. I wouldn't be standing here today. I just came back. I flew in. I was on a trip to visit my kids at school for homecoming at Brigham Young, and I flew back tonight because I had to be here. I wanted to be here and thank these men personally. But I just wish that, I know for these gentlemen, they're just doing their job, but for us, it's a life-changing experience as my 18-year-old daughter runs out of her dorm room and throws her arms around me and hugs me like she never wants to let me go. And I don't know how you thank anybody for that, for giving you the gift of life. So anyway, just thank you very much.
Tell you what, Mr. Mills and Mrs. Mills, if you'd let our council come down and shake hands with you. I tell you, I made this picture captured in order for our progressive live report. It was their daily, their job. Brand-new fire station, $5 million. Shining new fire truck, $20 million. Firefighter salary, say, after $50,000. Seeing, being here with Mills and seeing Mr. Mills here, just very much. So thank you guys very much. Okay, that's exciting. I tell you what, we get, I get more compliments than I ever thought of our firemen and when people need help, and they're the first to arrive. So it's certainly, it's a good part of our job, so thanks, everybody. And we'll move on to our public hearings. If the city clerk could sound the items.
Consideration of approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to I Love New York Pizza and Attila's Grill located at 980 Birmingham Road, Suite 200, Milton, Georgia, 30004. The applicant is Anar Gafarzada, consumption of premises wine and malt beverages. Agenda Item Number 12-271. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nothing might fall into that. Tonight's alcohol beverage license has followed all the required requirements of the law, and this is simply a new owner of the business. This business has had this conception on premises before, so staff recommends approval.
Do we have any public comments, any?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the council? We'll close the public hearing, and I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of the approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to I Love New York Pizza and Attila's Grill located at 980 Birmingham Road, Suite 200, in Milton, Georgia, 30004, where the applicant is Anar Gafarzada, consumption of the premises wine and malt beverages. Agenda Item Number 12-271.
Second motion. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Luss. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our zoning agenda. If our city clerk will read the rules.
I want to interject real quick, Mr. Mayor, because this other one we did defer, but because it was advertised as a public hearing.
Sure.
I would like to, just for the record, that the only reason it was deferred is because the sign that was required to be posted was not posted within 10 feet of the road, which it needed to be.
Okay.
But I would like to sound the item tonight, just open up the public hearing in case anybody came to speak in favor and opposition of it, and then close the public hearing and then move on.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing for the consideration of the approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Mr. Jing Inc., DBA Roussans, located at 1,300, 13,085 Highway 9, Suite 440, Milton, Georgia, 3004. The applicant is Jing Bo Lee for consumption of premises wine and malt beverages. So Agenda Item 12-272. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll defer that as we did in our agenda.
Do we need to vote to defer?
You did during the meeting.
You did, no, no. You changed the agenda.
Okay.
Deferred it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to zoning agenda. The city clerk will please read the rules.
The second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider zoning agenda. These items include zoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the zoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and the city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a zoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the zoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute will constitute a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening, our first one, is RZ 12-10, to create a definition for exotic animals and/or other related definitions within Section 64-1. This is Agenda Item Number 12-255. First presentation was heard at the October 1 regular meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. RZ 12-10, in essence, defines exotic animals as well as wild animals and also includes a definition for wildlife. I'm happy to go through it if you'd like. We did cover this at our work session, but it does list all the various animals that are defined as exotic or wildlife.
Does anyone have any questions or want to go through that, or clear on that? Questions for Kathy?
It doesn't appear there were any changes since our work session.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so we don't have any questions on that, counsel? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, can I just like ask Kathy, has there been any input?
None whatsoever, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Then I'll close the public hearing on this, and if there's no council discussion, if someone would like to make a motion.
I make a motion for the approval of Agenda Item Number 12-255.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So we'll move on to our next item. The city clerk will state that item for the record.
Next item is RZ 1209, to amend Article 6, Division 2, AG 1, Agricultural District, as it relates to allowing exotic animals within the AG 1 Agricultural District. Agenda Item Number 12-256. First presentation was heard at the October 1 regular meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this text amendment essentially changes the uses allowed under the agricultural uses by including uncertain exotic or wild animal uses as set forth in Section 64-1838 in conjunction with the issuance of a use permit. So that language has been added to the allowed uses within the agricultural zone.
Okay. Do we have any questions, Kathy or staff?
So currently, exotic animals are not allowed in the...
That is correct.
...in any zoning in Milton. This will just allow them in the agricultural zone.
Exactly.
With a permit.
With a permit, which we'll get into with the next text amendment.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's no other council discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve RZ 12-09 to amend Article 6, Division 2, AG 1, as it relates to allowing exotic animals within the AG 1 district.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second by Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Hearing none, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Can I start? Clerk, please sound the next, if you're unanimous.
Next item?
Kathy, you just stay up.
Next item is RZ 1213, to create a new use permit for exotic animals and/or related uses within Article 9, administrative permits and use permits, Division 5 miscellaneous uses. Agenda Item Number 12-257. First presentation was heard at the October 1, 2012, regular meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the text amendment that you just approved, RZ 12-9, talks about the fact that you're allowing exotic or wild animals in an agricultural zone with the issuance of a use permit. Therefore, this one, RZ 12-13, establishes the conditions for the use permit. And we did discuss this at our workshop meeting last week. There was a little discussion on the second page under subsection H, where we talk about the height of the fence. This is the interior fence, and that it should be a four or five board eprestrian-style fence, six feet high, with two-inch by four-inch welded wire, non-climbable material. And there was some discussion at that in terms of whether or not that would be a tight enough weave, so to speak, to prohibit young children from climbing over. And I did discuss this with staff as a follow-up to that discussion, and we did think that because it's only two inches wide, it's four inches high, but two inches wide in terms of the weave of the mesh, the fact that it was six feet high and only... of the weave of the mesh, the fact that it was six feet high, and only small kids could be able to get their footing within a two-inch wide mesh, that we did feel that the six-foot-high fence would prohibit, and that the two-by-four is probably alright. However, my chief building official mentions that there are several other dimensions of wire that we could look to, and so if you felt that you wanted something two-by-two, for instance, or a one-by-three, we could certainly put that in this ordinance.
Can you clarify, are we, on these fences, are we just talking about perimeter fence, not the actual closure for the animals?
No, correct.
But this is a perimeter fence, if it were on their right-of-way, front of the property side's rear, is that...
Well, it is an interior fence, from the front yard fence, but it, and it would be six feet high with some type of wire in between the four or five boards. And the idea is just to keep the animals in and the children out, so...
But just to clarify, that's really to keep the people out?
Yeah.
Because the animals are going to be on their own...
The animals will be permitted, and whatever the enclosure that would be needed for that particular type of animal would be regulated by the federal and state regulating authorities.
Okay, so we're just talking about something that keeps people out?
Yeah, pretty much, exactly.
And the other question I had, does this affect any facilities grandfathered? If we already had someone keeping exotic animals, does this affect them? Do they have to go in and change anything, or add a perimeter fence?
I'm going to turn that over to our city attorney. We did touch on this briefly also at our meeting last week, so...
Yeah, I don't think that this would require individuals to have to go out who already have something in place and dig up their fence and put a new one in. I do not believe that.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Applause prospectively.
Bill?
I mentioned last week, in that same subarticle, 2H, to insert the words fabric, F-A-B-R-I-C, between the words wire and non-climbable?
Wire, fabric, non-climbable material.
Welded wire, fabric, non-climbable.
Welded wire, fabric.
Karen?
I just want to confirm, this is only required if it's something that's visible from the public right-of-way, correct? Means this is something that's way behind the house or in the back, it would not be?
It's required along all interior property lines. If visible, if visible from a public right-of-way, it shall be a four- or five-board fence. So the style, if it's visible, shall be a four- or five-board fence. But there should be an interior fence. Doesn't have to be four- or five-board if it's not visible. But it would have to be six feet high with this wire fabric.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a little bit of clarification there? Discussion with the city manager, I want to make sure I answer your question accurately. The question was, I thought, whether this would require, I guess signage in, or not signage, but fencing in place now to be transitioned into this new sort. The basis of my explanation was, is if someone is legally non-conforming, in other words, we changed the law, but they do not have that situation existing on their property right now, but it was lawful before we changed the code, they do not have to go back and dig up their fencing and install new fencing. However, if it was not legal now, and then we changed the law and require a new standard or require something that's never been allowed in Milton before, but they have an old practice that was illegal right now, they would not get the benefit of being considered legal non-conforming. Okay? To be legal non-conforming, you have to be legal when you put it in the ground. And so I don't know if there are any examples of that now. If there are, and they are illegal now, that could be a problem. Now, whether or not that would be enforced, that's going to be a matter of code enforcement, I'm sure working with community development, but...
Well, I think, my question is if there's, you know, let's just go to an example, if there's an existing facility that has exotic animals, that is permitted through the state, but the city hasn't had an ordinance, what we passed tonight, typically, I would think that would, their facility would be grandfathered in, but if they were to go forward in the future and change it, or want to install fencing, it would have to... But that's my question, or would they be required to go back and add what the cities, this ordinance would?
I would put a lot of deference at that point into discussion with Ms. Field to find out if we believe that what they are doing now from a city regulatory perspective is legal. And if the answer to that is yes, then I have no concerns about them having to dig up anything. If the answer is no, and that we have the authority right now to go out there and issue a Milton citation, that's a different, that's a different answer.
Good. Matt, and then Joe.
Yeah, the, we talked last time as well, there's already a couple regulatory authorities that are handling this as well.
We did.
And I remember the six-foot-high exterior fence being a part of, I think, the DRB, right Kathy? As far as requirement, the exterior has to be six feet? Is that right?
Yeah, it's up to a maximum of six feet.
Then that's already been, that's already a regulatory law on, from another agency, right? Or another authority, not the city of Milton, but it's already in existence by the DR, not the DRB, excuse me, but the...
DNR.
DNR, right? Am I saying that right?
Yes, yes.
So, but did they also have a requirement for an interior fence of that six-foot-high fence? I'm trying to remember if that was the case as well, or are we just trying to do additional on top of that, that the Department of Natural Resources has already had? I just want to clarify that.
I think we were trying to do additional, in the sense, to make it a little higher, make it a little safer.
I, I mean, I just, I don't, for houses that are housed internally, I'm not necessarily sure if fencing around the perimeter is going to be effective to keep other animals like raccoons and such out. That's what the interior fences, I think, are for. I just want to make sure that we're not putting undue burden on anybody that may already have a structure like this already, you know? If they already are complying with the Department of Natural Resources, are we not requiring them to put additional fencing on the inside of their exterior fence? And that's basically what we're suggesting to do right here.
That's my question, yeah.
So, that's just the only concern I have. And I also, and I'm just trying to think about it, what I know about animals and what I know about, you know, situations like this, you know, requiring additional cost for something like this, I think is, is an excessive burden that may not have the effectiveness of what that is intending. Just my thought, so...
Joe?
Yeah, just to follow on with what Matt's saying, I mean, the, our discussion last week was all about, do we have enough expertise to know what needs to be recommended above and beyond what the DNR, what the state, what the county is already going to require? And so that's, that's the thing, I think, that was the most concerned as last week. But the thing that I wanted to know is, getting back to the illegal use, not being legal, can't be grandfathered in, how does the special use permit complicate this? Because special use permits are, you know, granted, I don't know if it's renewable annually, or you just have to get it once and then it's in place forever, but if we didn't have this before, and we're saying that this requires a special use permit, people that are, you know, interested in this are going to have to apply for the special use permit regardless of their current state? Is that a correct statement, Ken?
If, if the use right now, under the Milton Code, just take it out of the context of exotic animals, if any use is impermissible under the Milton Code such that a citation could be issued, and if we adopt a new rule that would allow that use to be legal with a special use or a conditional use permit, then that individual or entity operating that illegal use would need to come in and get a special use permit to be lawful, or otherwise it would be shut down.
Yeah, but, so my point is, that they're going to have to conform day one in order to get the special use permit, right?
Yes.
So the special use permit doesn't, doesn't think about, you know, the current condition or what was lawful before, it's all about what's lawful now and moving forward.
That's right, but it presupposes, you know, I don't believe if they were lawful before, and they were legitimate and lawful before, we would have the right to insist they do that. They would, in my estimation, be lawful, non-conforming.
Okay.
I think that was, goes back to my first question, you know? And let's face it, the 800-pound gorilla's in the room now, you know? Let's discuss, there is an existing facility, so...
Well, that's why I think I, and that's why I... And that's why I qualified my answer, that with respect to their status now, I would want to check with Ms. Fields to make sure that, for instance, if we all around this, in this room, believe that the use now is legal and lawful because it's regulated by all these myriad state entities, and that we are simply trying to augment and enhance, which is what we can do, and there's state regulations, local governments can augment and enhance those regulations, if that's all we're trying to do, then I'm not sure I see a concern. But again, I would want to defer to Ms. Fields, is whether or not she believes...
Do you, before we get any more questions, Ms. Field, do you want to address that at all, or...
Not, no, I, I think I would have to have a discussion first with our city attorney.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the reasoning behind this, but if you've got a 30, 40-acre parcel, to put a minimum six-foot-high fence around a 30 or 40-acre parcel may be a little bit of an overkill. So I am not sure that we're really accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish by Section H.
And I'll tell you what, my interpretation would be, and I know there's some discussion, from the guy with the monkey on his back, about...
On his head?
About other animals getting in and all, but I think this, you know, forget about somebody that's existing, but somebody new, if they're building a new facility, it probably wouldn't be a huge burden on them to add a six-foot-high fence around their enclosures, you know, X number of feet out. To Karen's point, yes, if somebody has a 10, 20-acre parcel...
It's at the all-interior property line.
And they have to do the whole property line, it would be. So, that's something we may want to discuss there.
Yeah, but aren't we trying...
But that fence is to, not to keep other animals out, but basically keep people out. I'd just like to put around a pool.
Yeah, but we're trying to do a one-size-fits-all kind of a thing, and isn't it case by case? I mean, depends on the kind of animal, it depends on all kinds of things. Yeah, that wasn't a question, that was rhetorical.
I mean, I think, I kind of understand the point. To me, it's to keep people out. I mean, animals, like he has, I visited the facility, some of them do bite, and if a child got into the property, I'm not saying that a six-foot fence, and I don't agree too that a two-by-four is non-climbable, because it's designed, and I won't say where, but, yeah. But we use smaller mesh to keep it from being, like, an inch-and-a-half mesh, as opposed to a two-inch mesh, like on a chain link or something like that. But to keep, it's not to keep animals out, it's to keep kids out especially, from coming in and, you know, accessing during hours when it's not open and supervised. So I do understand the safety concern. I was not able to be at the last work session, so I'm a little bit disadvantaged. This is only applies to if you want to operate a facility with it got animals, where you have to do this fencing?
With what?
The fencing requirement. Is it just if you're operating with exotic animals, or not just an AG1 use?
Yes, sir. Yes, that would be a condition of the special use permit as it relates to exotic and wild animals.
Let me, let me, let me add this to, I think, Councilmember Longoria's point. Case by case, or maybe it was Councilmember Thurmond, but let's be realistic, we're probably not going to get a ton of these cases for us every year, every month, or whatever. So would it be advisable to give the staff leeway to look at it, and the council, on a case by case? You know, if it's on a 50-acre parcel and there's nothing around it, and they meet all the requirements for the DNR and whatnot, it's safe, it's fine. If it's in a neighborhood and there's chances, you know, next to a neighborhood or something, there's a chance of little kids running up, you know, couldn't that be part of the conditions for that facility? Let staff look at that and make a reasonable...
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
Rather than doing a one-size-fits-all and...
Would we just take out H then, and just do it as we need it?
Bill?
I think we had similar discussion regarding swimming pools during the work session, with a similar type of fence around it, and we talked about, if you had a swimming pool in the center of a 10-acre site, and the entire site was fenced, but the swimming pool ordinance also requires a separate fence around the pool, so I think we're talking about the minimum or the maximum separation between the swimming pool fence and the perimeter fence. And I think this is about the same issue that we're talking about here, is fencing around the actual compound itself. I'd be in favor of leaving that up to discretion of the Community Development Director.
Yeah, and you know, also, the regulatory agencies may also weigh in on this in terms of requirements, and so we could certainly, at the time of the application for the use permit, we view with the fencing applications would be, if any, by the regulatory licensing agencies.
And we hear use permit cases here, correct? So I mean, that gives us a good vehicle for the case by case, case.
Yeah, I agree with that, the fact that if it goes through a use permit, I mean, that's the purpose of the use permit, is to set certain conditions.
And we can always...
And do it there in that process, just like we did with the riding arenas and other, you know, that's why we do a use permit process. So I think having that as a means of, and I agree with the fact that, you know, to me, it's more important, say, within a certain distance of the compound than maybe having fenced off, not at the property line. The reason for it is to keep unauthorized entry into an area that could be, you know, a problem. And I would think the owner, also from a liability standpoint, would want that as well. So I think, you know, using the use permit as a vehicle for that is appropriate.
Let me ask, is there any public comment on this? I'll, I'll close the public hearing part. It sounds like, to me, maybe if we take H out with the fence, is that, I think the attorney is okay with that? Chris, are you, you got any comments on that? Kathy, you're okay with that? So if, you know, the council wants to talk about that yet?
Yeah, I mean, maybe for H, instead of just saying the requirements for the fence, you know, a, you know, a minimum with regards to DNR regulation, or, you know, unless, unless it's been determined more so by the designer review board, I mean, I don't have any say that, or can we do that for H, or should we, or...
I don't know that we're kind of double. I don't know if we need to address that or not, since they've already got to go through the DNR's regulations, that would have to meet those requirements at the last, but just trying to keep it simple.
Okay. We also had some discussion on I, as to whether or not that needed to be in there as well, because people that are operating these types of facilities, again, are reporting up to the licensing bodies, you know, exactly how many animals they have, and to tell you the truth, I don't know how often that changes, that could be changing on a daily basis, and so it'd be difficult to grasp, and they're doing it already for other groups now.
I could comment on that, too, again. From a local base, I think it's important for us to know those types of things, just like we just had the emergency responders in here. You know, there are occasions where there's storms, I've seen these local sews where there's storm damage, and you've got animals running all over the place because the enclosures have been crushed by a tree or something like that, and you've got, so I think it's important from a local level that we do at least know what's being kept off the front.
I think I had, when we were discussing it, you know, again, we don't want to add another level of governance to the facilities or the property owners, but to Councilmember Largis' point, that's important. I think we kind of discussed about possibly having, when they have to do their reports, whether it's monthly or whatever, to the DNR, that the city has copied and could be put in place where if there was an emergency or something, you know, got at least a good idea, but not necessarily making the applicant do additional work, just forwarding us a copy at the same time, or copying us or something like that, does that make sense?
Definitely.
Yeah.
We don't need an extra layer, huh? There's already enough other layers of government.
Or to pay, you know, our employees to do additional, so... So if, you know, somebody, if somebody wanted to make a motion, they could, you know, address those two items and...
Couldn't you almost leave I in as it's written, and since it doesn't have any criteria, just leave it in as it is, and that doesn't tie you to every time of birth or death or transfer?
That would be fine.
Okay. We have a motion?
Yeah, there.
Sorry.
You want us to hang on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
To leave I in as it's written, that's going to be a little bit, I don't think it says what you all want it to say, and I hate to have a law in the books that doesn't say precisely what you want it to say, because it would be subject to all sorts of interpretations. So if truly what you're intending is that at such times, whenever those times occur, that the owner of exotic animals is required to report to some other governing body an inventory that would be on their property, that the city just wants to be copied on that initiative? The way this, the strict interpretation, the way this reads, is that if it changes, then they got to notify us tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day.
Right.
I don't think you all wanted to say that, so I don't want to leave it in as it's written and not capture the intent.
Right.
So...
So the words would be...
Well, I was starting to write, which is consistent, and I had to say, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Well, hold it, isn't this the same thing as the fence issue? Because depending on what kind of exotic animals we're talking about, the conditions and the need for communication of that sort could be different. And so if it's something that we give the, you know, staff the leeway to say, okay, I want this communicated every time you notify the DNR, or something like that, it can get copied in or built in to the special use permit when it's issued, is that...
You know, that would be good, I would be even good with just a comment at the end of that, and say, subject to the conditions which are placed during the use permit process or something, because you might decide that, gosh, we need to know what's out there more frequently for, you know, four-toed, you know, winged owls, and don't need to know as often for, you know, I don't know. But maybe it's just something that's just saying, as frequently as council determines during the use permit process.
I mean, yeah, that could be, you know, a good way to do it, too, because, again, it's not like we're going to be looking at these every month, so when we do have one, we can spend the time, and Chris has got a good point, I mean, let's make up some, but let's say peacocks or some, or some kind of birds or something, if they were to get out, to Councilman Largis' point, if they were to get out, it's not a public safety issue, but, you know, obviously, there are other animals, if they were tigers, lions, or something like that.
Tigers, yes.
So, yeah, we could weigh the importance of communicating based on the type of animal. Okay, so you got an idea?
Okay, I think I got an idea on that. Okay, so...
Phil, you want? Well, to that point, establishing a use permit, how are you going to generate that type of report then? What's going to, what's going to establish that requirement in the use permit if we don't capture it someplace in this ordinance, or in some other ordinance?
Phil, kind of my idea here is that the new I would become, or H would become, actually, the new H would become, as it's written, applicant shall form a director of economic development, writing of the number, and types of animals to be housed on the subject property, and many changes there, too, which is consistent, and in conformance with the conditions of the use permit. So if you all put a condition in the use permit to report, then they're in conformance with it, whatever that is, that might be once a month, once a year, or once every two years. But something along those lines, that just allows each case, again, to be evaluated independently, go up with the conditions on it, you want to, when it comes in front of you.
But initially, initially with the use permit process, they need to declare what type of animals they are going to be housing at that point.
Of course.
Right.
Okay, you clear, Joe?
Yep.
What you want?
Yep. So I'd move to create a new use permit for exotic animals and/or related uses within Article Nine Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Division Five Miscellaneous Uses, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Two Five Seven, with the following edits to the document, the language that was included in our packets, the striking of Section H, which starts with a minimum six foot high fence, and the addition of the following language after thereto in Section I, based on a schedule determined and agreed to as part of the use permit.
I'll second that.
We'll address that, Chris, real quick.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that, but before you vote, if you would just also make reference then, that the I that was published becomes H, and J becomes I.
Yes, exactly. Whatever word, whatever word decides is going to happen.
Do you want to clarify that, though, just to make sure?
Yes, striking H, Section I would become Section H, the new Section H, Section J would become the new Section I.
Perfect, thank you.
Let me second that.
Let me second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, a second by Councilmember Hewitt. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we can have the city clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is R C twelve fourteen, to amend Article Nine Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Division Three Administrative Permits, Subdivision Two, Minimum Standards, Section Sixty Four Dash One Six Zero Nine, Swimming Pool Private, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Two Five Eight, first presentation at October first, regular council meeting. Mr. Wade Green.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How do you do this evening? This is just a housekeeping, text and a cleanup to get our Milton code more in line with the National Building Code, and we've discussed it in the work session. We did have some conversation about climbability, and whether, how this would work with the property lines, and we've added, under Section B here, the barriers shall not be located more than one hundred and fifty feet from the water's edge of the pool. Doing a little bit of research on this, this allows this to bring it somewhat away from using the perimeter fence for a pool barrier, but in the same token, allowing that perimeter fence to be utilized on some of our smaller lots, to where we wouldn't be that far away, to where we didn't cause a small lot to have another fence interior on that, that's the reason we went with the one hundred and fifty feet from the water's edge, along with some question from council last week. The other question that came up, as I recall, was about the meters or the monitors that go on the interior of the pool, and whether or not that alleviated the pool barrier, done some research on that, and while they are well spoken of, the code has not grabbed hold of that to give that an exception to that pool barrier. So at this time, the code does not recognize that as an exception to the pool barrier. Is there any other questions?
Any questions for Wade on this? If there's no questions, I'll open it up for, of course, I'll check, is there any, no public comment on that, close the hearing, and then, is there any discussion, or if not, open it up to a motion or a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve and amend Article Nine Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Division Three Administrative Permits, Subdivision Two, Minimum Standards, Section Six Four Dash One Six Zero Niner, Swimming Pool Private, Agenda Item Number One Two Dash Two Five Eight.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Largis, a second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into reports and presentations now. We've got a presentation from Al Nash and Brandon Beach with Progress Partners in North Fulton.
Mayor, Council, I'm Al Nash, and I'm the executive director of Progress Partners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to speak to you. Before I do that, I want to extend my congratulations to y'all, I hadn't had the opportunity on a couple awards that you got, which are really great tools to put in our toolbox of economic development, and when y'all were named the best quality of life city in Georgia, and the ninth in the southeast, what a great honor. And when we're out working on economic development, that's one that I like to use, and you all ought to be commended for the work you've done in such a short period of time. And secondly, was the work that you accomplished in the Crab Apple area with your form-based zoning and your transfer development right ordinances, you know, that was a huge step. I live right around the corner from there, and I think that that is going to be a real great area, well, it already is, but what you have done and what can be created there, because one of the big things that we do here is about walkability, schools, and so forth, and you've got a great footprint there. So those two things, I wanted to commend you. As you guys know, we entered into sort of an arrangement around the fifteenth of July, so we've been at it for about ninety days, and I'm here today to kind of give you kind of an update where we are, but let me first go back and really kind of talk about, a little bit about Progress Partners. We are an initiative of the chamber, and our focus is create jobs, retain jobs, and work on economic development policies that helps companies grow, and to work on issues that affect the quality of life that we have in North Fulton. There's always competition out there, but when you've got six distinct cities, and you put them together, we really have a, really a tremendous opportunity, unique opportunity. And so that makes our job a little bit easier. And as we go around and participate around the country and work with site selection people, we got a great story, and the future is really bright. We are sort of the central source of economic development. When there's a project that is, especially on the state level or regional level, we're kind of the guys in North Fulton that get the call, and we kind of point them, or they've already pointed in the direction we work with them. To do that, we need to make sure that we, as we move forward, that we keep the balance, and workforce development is a huge issue, so we have really put a great effort in that, and will continue. We've got great K through twelve, both public and private schools, I'll talk a minute a little bit, but the technical college, that's something we've started working on about two and a half years ago, and as we move forward, it's going to be a huge piece of our, it will be a tool in our toolbox that's really going to help, because, as we all know, retraining and training in those areas, especially in technology and other areas, are going to be real important. And, but one thing that we, I would share with you that is something that might be of a little bit of interest, is that if you look at all the six cities, and I don't have to break down per city, but we are still a big importer of labor, we have a daytime population in the six cities of about three hundred and fifty thousand. It is estimated, we had Georgia Power help us and run some modeling based on some programs that they have, and they're projecting that in the daytime, the six cities, we have a population of about six hundred and forty-eight thousand people. We have about one hundred and twenty-six thousand people that leave to go to work outside our area, and we have about three hundred and forty thousand that come within the six cities. So I think long term and long range, we're going, hopefully, what we want to do is to capture those people and to get them to come and live and work and participate, and I know y'all would, it would be welcome to having a lot more folks that would come and share and live in our community here. I'm going to go through just a quick kind of presentation here, I guess I was, got to go back here just a little bit. All right, there you go. Let me give you a quick snapshot, since the first of the year, we have been, Progress Partners has been involved in about seventy-four projects, which have created about two thousand seven hundred forty-eight jobs, and about three hundred and eighty-two square feet of leased space, and about thirty-one million dollar development. I don't want to stand here tonight and tell you that we did all of that alone, but we work our, with our regional development partners in working on creating those jobs, and that's in the six cities of North Fulton. We have continued to try to, one of the things that we set out early on was to try to help brand North Fulton, and what we're really working on with very limited funds in this, and to pool our resources is trying to get exposure to North Fulton, and so any time that we can get a positive quote in any of the publications and work along those lines, and we work very closely with your staff here, I will tell you that, I've noticed that Jason out here does a great job of getting stuff out, and you need to continue to do that, because it does, in the social media world that we deal with, that is really good, and anything, opportunities that we have, we're going to try to pass them on to let you know about those. One of the things that this region needed to do was be a player at the table on the regional economic development, so this year, we have participated in a number of trade and marketing trips and so forth. I just returned a week ago, or two weeks ago, from being in California, and it was a trip that we had done last year with the Metro Chamber, Georgia Power, State of Georgia, and other economic development regional people. The good news is that North Fulton, Milton is on the radar. I had, when I was at San Francisco, for example, we met with a couple of the real estate people that have operations up in this area, and we are continuing to communicate the importance and what we have, and the availability of opportunities in Milton. The next thing that we have embarked on, and I'm just going to go through these, we are, one of the things you really have to do, in my opinion, is to really try to get your base information, and working with your staff and so forth, we really started concentrating primarily in that regional activity center there of Deerfield. And what we found, and again, some of this you know, is that there's approximately about seven tracts in that area that consist, undeveloped, that consist of about ninety-six acres. And so what we want to do next is to try to really understand who controls those pieces of property, what's their vision, what are they zoned for, and so that we can work collectively with you and them on educating brokers or businesses that might be looking to expand. Hopefully, we're coming out of this recession that we've been in, and hopefully, those opportunities will allow us to take advantage of some of this. We pulled together some data using basically CoStar, and I will clarify to say that some of the data that we found is probably needs to be redefined, but I wanted to come tonight and share a little bit with you. There are, within the Deerfield activity area, there are possibly nine major development visit, or office parks, basically there. It consists of about a million two square feet, according to CoStar, it's about eighty-six percent occupied, based off the rent rolls, is probably somewhere between eighty-seven to a hundred businesses. Of those eighty-seven to a hundred businesses, approximately seven companies have excess of fifty thousand feet. I think that's important to know, and we, what we want to do is to, as our next steps, is part of that, is to work on business retention and expansion of the network. And so we've got a couple of dates from Chris, we're shooting for early December to host a broker property managers luncheon, learning lunch here, we're going to invite Joe, and I'm, the mayor, excuse me, and any of y'all that might want to pop in, but it's really to start that dialogue with those, with the brokerage communities, the folks that own and are given the, charged with the responsibility to manage and lease those buildings. I've spoken to three of the brokers in the last week or so regarding the ones that appear to have the bulk of the space, and they're very enthusiastic about the opportunity to get to know you and get to meet you. The second part of this will be to identify those businesses, and those key businesses, and what I, I've challenged, or taken the responsibility, talked to Chris, and spoken to your staff and the mayor about possibility of us making, making sure that we call on and have dialogue with those larger businesses, to really give them, let them know that the city is behind them, thank them for their business, and also find out from them what needs they might have, and I'm, you know, and I think some of that's already going on with some of your public safety people, but I think it's important that we get in front of them and also learn from that. We have started to do some preliminary looking in the Highway Nine area. We had a meeting last week that we called with Brandon Beach, who is on the DOT board, facilitated a meeting with the chief engineer from the state, and we had representatives from all the three cities, Roswell, Alpharetta, and Milton, regarding Highway Nine and the improvements of that, because with your livable centers initiative and Highway Nine, there's probably some things that we need to do, and we need to know collectively where we need to push those buttons to try to find and secure the money in the permitting process, because that's going to be a key to that. But with that retail, one of the things that we would like to do is to target some specific things about how do we take care of some of that vacant space in some of those areas. In conversation with Chris, we uncovered that there's probably a couple pad sites, for example, it might be, we need to find the right restaurant, it's more of a sit-down type restaurant. type restaurant that would be important. I know that is important from a variety of permitting and tax revenue and so forth, if we could find some of those, it might be that opportunity. The other key thing that we're going to continue to do is to understand how we can help you with, again, your Highway nine and also the other projects that you have within the city. I guess I would end with this, that one of the things that we have just really worked on in the last year and a half is collaboration between the cities and all the parties. I read an article of the weekend, and I'm, hopefully I'll get this quote correct, that the governor of Colorado is a guy named Hippenlooper, who used to be the mayor of Denver. And about four years ago, I happened to be in Denver on a link strip, and he came and spoke to us. This guy owned and operated a bar, a restaurant, he called it a bar. And I'll never forget that he came to us and he spoke, and he stood there at the podium, I shouldn't say, but he had a beer in his hand, and he gave his presentation with beer, and I said, man, this guy's a pretty interesting guy. Anyway, he's gone on to be governor, and he's very about growth and so forth, but he says the new collaboration is going to be the new competition of the future. And if we want to compete regionally, we all have to work together, and we're working with all the cities. As you know, Winwood Parkway, on one side is Roswell, on one side is Milton. Halfing across, on the other side of Winwood Parkway, behind Bennys, is a 250,000 square foot vacant building. And that building could occupy a lot of jobs. And we, Alpharetta has been working on trying to expand their opportunity zone. We, last, early part of this year, we actually hired a consultant to determine wherever else in North Fulton we could get one. Unfortunately, Milton did not fall into that. Alpharetta has applied for one. That particular building was the runner-up on the State Farm deal that went down inside the perimeter in DeKalb County across Perimeter Mall. It's a, there are a couple of things that are in the mill that we are, and the state and the broker that has that building working on. I am hopeful that at some point that that building will be occupied. But that's an example of trying to figure out how we work together to help move the ball. I'm excited about this opportunity, and I want to thank you for allowing us to work on it, and we will come back and report to you. We're available to meet with you individually or however you'd like to help, but it's about moving the needle and helping to improve our community. So thank you for giving us the opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I, I want to thank you, Al, and your team. I think most of everybody here of us know that, you know, in the North Fulton area, we all have something a little different in each city to offer, and everything that you guys are doing, whether directly or indirectly, helps us out. And, you know, whether it's, of course, we'd like to be first choice on, say, a new business or whatever, but, or an employer, but if Alpharetta gets it, then we may get some new homeowners and things like that, or vice versa, we get more shoppers, things like that. So just appreciate you doing everything you do, and, you know, as long as everybody keeps in mind, this is a regional approach and with Milton participating, so.
Right. I did, your staff has this initial report, which is in that Deerfield area, but it, as I said earlier, I quantify by saying that after going through some of it, we think there's some holes in it that we have to do, but it is sort of, CoStar is what we'd use, which is what most of the broker community uses, but there are some, there are some holes in it that we need to work through, but it's a good starting point. Phil?
Help me understand this one slide you have up here. I can do the calculus, but usually the basic math stumps me. Got 2.2 million square feet of office space.
That, let me say that that slide should be 1.2, and I thought it got changed a few minutes ago, but evidently it didn't, and I'm, I'm sorry. It should be, that should be 1.2 million square feet of office space within that Deerfield area in those nine buildings? Sorry.
Seemed like a lot.
A good eye, good eye.
Well, you take 86% of 2.2 million, about a, you have about a million.
I apologize, I apologize. We caught that in.
But if you can get us up to the 2.2, we would appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, I think if you add the other 96, I could, no, but anyway. Yes, Matt?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say the, you know, it's different because we're talking about a regional approach, and you're trying to see we got to come together as well, but there's, you know, competition amongst ourselves is healthy as well. You know, we, we've had some great ribbon cutting ceremonies here in Milton the last couple of weeks, which I think has been fantastic. And, you know, even though a business may come from Alpharetta to Milton and vice versa, you know, we're still competing for those businesses within it. And then ultimately, as that competition grows, I think that's going to become the place where we want to do businesses in this area, and then your efforts to help spur that competition is a positive thing. So I don't want to say competitive, I just really don't want to say competition is a bad thing. You know, I think it's a good thing. I think it's healthy for us, and I think.
Well, I think as you said, collaboration is the competition. It's the new competition, I should say. I'll get it right.
Right. So, you know, it's kind of like we're our own little division in a football league, and we all want to beat each other up, but if we're going to lose, we definitely want to make sure someone in the region goes home.
Well, the mayor said it right, I mean.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I got a question. Matt, did you play football?
And where does something like council reports talk about too, by the way?
Listen, not, I notice y'all been here a long time, but I would echo what the mayor said about this. When something happens in Roswell, something good might happen. And I'm going to tell you, kind of being across the board and living here a long time, it is a new day in North Fulton, and we're working through that. And the amount of collaboration that is going on, especially in the public safety area, is tremendous. And how y'all work and the backup and all of this, and, you know, I, I, I live kind of in, I'm on Roswell, Milton, and all of that, and I know that I'm in good hands because on, right down the street, I know I got a Milton Fire Department, I got a Roswell Fire Department, and, anyway, but it's, it's a great place to live, and I'm excited, and I'm very appreciative to get, have the opportunity to serve and work in this community. And I want to thank each of you for your service that you do. It's, it's a team effort, so.
Okay, anybody else have?
I have a quick question. Um, the, yeah, I appreciate all your efforts, and I do think cooperation is very important. Competition's good, as long as we're on top. But no, no. But in your efforts, most of them focused, like, you know, percentage basis, more on professional, technology-type businesses as opposed to retailers and things like that. I mean, a lot of times, you know, some people, you talk business to them, they automatically think retailers, you know? You know, probably in the Deerfield area, we're looking more for, you know, we're looking for professional and technology-type businesses. So generally, in your contacts and with the statewide economic development branches, well, is it more professional?
Well, in the statewide, it is, is more office, technology, that type of thing, but what is interesting is kind of the, well, the kind of the, through the chamber and through just local relationships, it's about figuring out how to connect the dots and help. You know, you and I were, I think, we were over there at that opening of the American Family Help Deal. And talking to the doctor who has 45 of those around the country, and, you know, he's, he's wanting to put two or three more here in, in, in North Fulton. So, I mean, those opportunities are there. Or on this restaurant, for example, you know, making sure that we get to the right person who's going to make the decision with the four, or five, or six that maybe could, maybe go there. Making sure that we get those words out to whoever, a lot of us connecting the dots and working off relationships that we know some, you know somebody, or I know somebody, know somebody to help do that and try to drive that. And so I think those are, you know, and trying to bring in the folks that are kind of responsible those and really understand for them what they're doing and what they're thinking and that. I don't, probably didn't answer your question totally, but.
Well, I think in a certain way.
We're just not strictly big, big business, but just trying to figure out how to connect people up.
And we also, you know, you and I have talked before, as well as you've talked with others, talking about weaving the fabric of the community and kind of creating a, a dynamic that attracts people to want to work here because there's, and stay here because there's lots around here for us to, to offer. So, you know, I appreciate.
Well, it's getting those people who, you know, I would venture to say we've got people living in the city of Milton that, that have some influence with things that we're trying, that when I say we, that y'all, we are trying to get accomplished, that we just need to figure out how to, how to get to those people.
Right.
I mean, it's amazing, you pull back the onion, peel the onion back, who's actually up here and who's, who, who's people doing business with or did business with. It's just working on it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
All right, thank you guys.
Again, thank you, Al, thank you, Brandon. We appreciate y'all coming and taking your time to be here with us. Okay, I'm, anybody on council have any reports? Well, now that you mention it.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I do too. Oh, my gosh.
What were they playing?
Notre Dame is 6-0, that's all I got to say.
That's great.
Lance?
Got skin on your teeth there. That's okay, as long as you're on top. I had one of our, our constituents reach out to me about the responsible, I guess, mainly dog owner act that Georgia hasn't acted, and she basically pointed out to me that, you know, there have been, I don't know, in Milton, but in the region or the metro area, there have been several vicious dog attacks, and that, you know, we, and again, I just told her I would try, want to bring it up in council reports, that, you know, make our, I'm a animal lover, but I'm also a big proponent of people should be responsible for the animals that they have, just like they're responsible for the adolescent children, you know, that they have. And I've, I've known personally people that have been maimed for life as a child by, by dogs. And partially because, and some of them have been family dogs, but, you know, I don't know if there's a way that we can at least make our constituents aware of the fact that, you know, they need to be responsible, that there is a law that if there is a case in at least our jurisdiction, that that law is enforced, and that people are responsible for the acts of, and it mainly applies to the dogs. I mean, really, I have a Siamese cat, and I don't think she's going to do too much damage. But, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and something that we all should be aware of, and, and try to make our constituents mindful of it as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to keep in mind, start from looking. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things too.
We got one.
We got one. Well, the Milton roundup is coming up. We better make sure all there as well. And I went to the Hopewell Baptist Church Fall Festival, which was the same day as the Crab Apple Festival, and had a great time up there. They were, you know, they had a great car show and, and just a lot of good stuff.
I would have gone, but I was out of town.
You were out of town. I was asking where you were.
You and I couldn't get in the lockup.
And they, and I asked them specifically.
The lockup again.
Well, I told them, they said, I'm here, you can put me in jail, and they said, no, we're not going to do it this time, so you lucked out, so it worked out well.
Yeah.
Also, too, we're going to have to talk about neon signs over the Birmingham crossroads. It's been a situation where they don't have a whole lot up there, but they're not able to show people that they're open, and I've heard it from about five or six different business owners up there, we've got to review that, and at least take a look at that again. So that's all I got.
Good. I, you know, had the festival, went, I think, very well, and Crab Apple too, I was there, and proud of all our Crab Apple people that, and our staff working together, making that happen, so. It's kind of public safety and everybody else that was involved, so thank you, guys. Chris, you got anything to add?
Just a couple of real quick things. We'll talk about the neon signs in the local work session, just so y'all know that's coming up, and that's when that will happen. Reminder, you have the North Fulton Municipal Association meeting this week is in this building, if you happen to, want to attend, that's Thursday, 1:00 to 7:30, and that's probably.
Probably not on.
Turn it on. Shuffle papers. And other than that, a very productive travel to Arizona. Appreciate y'all letting me go. Was able to tell them the story, I think it went over very well, and really enjoyed having a full audience and a lot of follow-up afterwards, so. Be happy to talk to you more about that if you want to know kind of how that went, but it was a whole lot of fun, so thanks for letting me do that, and that's, that's what I've got.
Good. All right. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Motion to second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.